Good morning, everybody. My name is Hillary Highslope. I am the Director of the Clueston Chamber of Commerce. And I am joined this morning with John Basquin, who is our current School Board member, as well as Richard Murphy, who is running for School Board, Henry County School Board. And today, we are doing a candidate forum. And I'm glad that both gentlemen were able to hop on Zoom this morning and were able to come onto our Facebook Live and share with you guys our candidate forum this morning. So it's been a hot minute since we've had to use Zoom. So we're trying to work through some technical issues that we've not had to experience in a little while. Luckily, we've been able to do most of our meetings in person. So that's been nice. But we are doing this back on Zoom. The Chamber has found it to be a great platform for us to work with to do these types of events so that our viewers who are working and things like that are able to go back at your time and watch these events. You know, maybe this evening, maybe it's a week from now, maybe it's a day before Election Day, whatever that looks like. And you're still able to enjoy this service and just kind of see where the candidates stand on some of the issues that may be important to you. So with that said, there are a couple of rules and things that I would like to discuss and go over. The candidates are well aware of the rules and regulations that they need to abide by. We did go through that stuff on the backend of this. And they are prepared to follow those. And they're ready to get this party started, if you will. And then, so for our viewership, we do ask that we be kind and courteous. We do ask that you participate. We look forward to seeing some, hopefully seeing some questions dropped in the comments below. If you have something that we don't cover that you might like for us to ask these candidates, feel free to drop those in the questions below or drop it in the comments below, rather. We'll be happy to see if that's something that we can get to if time allows. We are trying to be conscious of the candidate's time as well as the viewer's time and, of course, the staff's time. So feel free to drop that in the comments. And of course, we encourage Mr. Murphy and Mr. Basquin to go back in and look at comments and questions that people leave and know that this is a great opportunity for these candidates to communicate with their constituents directly in the coming days and weeks leading up to the August 23 election date. So with that being said, any questions and comments are welcomed and encouraged. We do have a zero tolerance policy, however, for overly negative things. Any kind of negative language will not be tolerated at all. It will be immediately deleted. Any kind of overly negative comments, attacking comments, things like that, this is not the place for that. You're welcome to do that on your own page, on your own time. But the Chamber of Commerce's page is a professional page, and we will not be leaving anything like that up on our page. So be warned that that will not sit and it will not fly. So without any further ado, we will get started. And Mr. Murphy, if you would like to get us started, if you want to take your two minutes and go ahead and introduce yourself, I do have an alarm that I set here. It will give off an audible dinging sound. And once that goes off, you have a couple seconds of buffer time. If you don't stop, I do have the mute button power, so I will stop it. So thank you.
No problem. Okay, so welcome, everybody that's joining us. We appreciate your time joining in. Glad to see this happening. Good open discussion. The Chamber's involved, the community's involved. I'm Rick Murphy, and I'm from Hookers Point, one raised there. And graduated close to high school. Had two daughters that graduated close to high school and also college. Been in business there quite a few years with Henry County Voters and Management. And then decided to go back into a different career. Became a teacher, taught in Hollis County, Palm Beach County, and then went into administration. I served on the School Board 14 years. This is the original district I was elected in. And then, 2012, elected Superintendent of Henry County, where I served. After that term, I was recruited to work in Palm Beach County with the school district over there and a former administrator and Clueston resident, Mr. Jim Kidd. His dad was a former principal of the Clueston Elementary years ago. The old Riverick Building, we call the main office now in Clueston. But anyway, recruited over there to work with him. Worked in Palm Beach County system. And then went to work in Manatee, teaching there, supporting my daughter and grandchildren in their schools. And so kind of got from there, started consulting business for education. And recently moved back into business and focused on consulting. Took a break from the schools during COVID. COVID was pretty high, but pretty involved in the system otherwise. Family's from Clueston. There's about 12 of us, seven of us still alive. I have family in the system that are teaching, work in the system. I have students in the system that are part of my family. So pretty involved otherwise.
Basquin, if you would like to take your two minutes to introduce yourself.
Okay, good morning. My name is John Basquin. I am the current Henry County School Board District Number Five Representative. So I thank you for that. I've had that pleasure of holding that title for the past eight years. And so just a little bit about myself. I am 50 years old. I grew up in Clueston. I have lived in the area my entire life, never been anywhere but Clueston. So I've got three children that all graduated close in high school, as well as myself and my wife. And so I went to a welding school for a short period of time after I graduated high school in Clueston, 1991. Then I proceeded to work for a few different local contractors till such time that I, my wife and I decided to start our welding company in 2005. I am currently employed today. So like I said, I have three kids, all graduated close in high school. Went on, got college degrees after that. And been in the community, been around the community, been a productive member of the community for many years. Had the pleasure of working with kids, from the 4-H kids to coaching kids all the way up. Very invested in this community and want to continue to stay that way. Have every plan to stay that way. My daughter is now a school teacher. Now I have grandchildren coming into the school system, so I have a very big interest in the school system today as much or more so than whenever my kids went to school. Forward to another eight years. Past the first four years, we're going to wait years. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
That was great timing. Thank you so much. Okay, so what we're going to do from here is we're going to go straight into the questions. And the first question is going to go to you, Mr. Murphy. I am going to go ahead and ask you to hit your own unmute button. It looks like you muted yourself. So if you can unmute yourself, that would be awesome. There you go. Why are you running for School Board, Mr. Murphy? Why are you running for a School Board seat? If elected, what would your priorities be?
I'm running because I care about Henry County, the students in the system. Care about, of course, the kids, the teachers, the employees. And I've always had a best interest. Like John, I delivered everything, coached football, coached girl softball, been involved 4-H. Back in the days, Florida J.C., Clouston J.C., been a former Elk, Quanian. You know, pretty well involved over the years. It's always been where my family is. That's where I've always been, basically, growing up there. So I'm pretty well, you know, that's where, of course, my heart is. That's why I've always done that. And I'm ready to, you know, contribute again and ongoing. And if the voters would allow me to do that, nothing personal against John, he's a good guy. It's just I want to serve and want to bring all my experiences and knowledge and skills that I've had over the years and still continue with in different associations to the table and try to do the best we can for Henry County as it grows.
Okay, thank you. And so, Mr. Basquin, the same question would go to you. Why are you running for the School Board seat? And if elected, what would your priorities be?
Well, I've been on the board for the past eight years, and I feel that I have been a productive board member so far. So I would like to continue to improve our schools, our kids, for our teachers, and all of our employees that work for the, you know, work for the district to expand our vocational programs. We have grown so much in the last eight years in our vocational programs. And I just can't wait to see how much further we can go and grow in the next eight years. Got so much opportunity there to grow our vocation and our school system. The kids in our schools, in our area, deserve to have education, something besides college, another opportunity out there. Again, like my kids have college degrees, so I have nothing against college. But there are some kids that just don't have any interest in that. And I feel that we need to have a strong vocation program in our schools. That is my goal, is to continue to grow and expand that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Mr. Basquin, we're going to stick with you for the next question. And then we'll let Mr. Murphy answer it. I probably won't say the question twice unless you need me to repeat it. I absolutely will be willing to do that, but just it'll help expedite the process a little bit. But if you would like me to repeat it, please feel free to ask me. What particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
Very much like I've already stated, I've been a board member for the past eight years. So, you know, that's been an awesome opportunity. And I also own and operate a small business with my wife. I stated that earlier as well, that we've been running successfully for the past 17 years. So we have some business experience there. I understand what it takes in the business world to get things done. You know, how if we don't have the right people in the right jobs in the right places, that you can go the wrong way in a hurry. So I feel that is a very important thing to do, to make sure that we have the right people in the right places. And with business experience and background, that's a, I feel that's a strong suit there. And, you know, we just need to learn how to trust the people that we put in those places, so they can do the job and we can continue to move forward. Ultimately, we've got to educate the kids and have the right people there to do that.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. And Mr. Murphy, that same question to you. You gotta hit your mute button.
It must be doing it automatically, somewhere.
No, I think so too. I don't know why it's doing that.
It's okay. It must be voice-actuated, I guess.
I'll remind you.
No, it comes up later, anyway. No problem. But anyway, you know, worked in business there, Clueston High School, and also during high school, played sports, worked for the Ford franchise, third generation. Things, business was good. Decided to get involved with schools, ran school board, elected at kids in the system, and decided to change careers after being involved with the system. Never thought I'd teach, but I have. And so, you know, became a teacher, you know, first in middle school, six through eight, root awakening, so I can appreciate all teachers in pre-K through 12. And then, you know, had a chance to go into administration, serve superintendent. So that part I've learned and understand, the superintendent's role and all the administration's role. You know, worked in administration in Palm Beach County Schools over there. You know, became a teacher and worked in different classrooms from K to 12 since that time. So, you know, all those experiences and skills, you know, have helped me grow. Of course, we all need to continue growing. I continue my education, you know, with, continue with FAU, had leadership, also doing some consulting and some other programs with the Florida school administrators and so on. So I think, you know, bringing those skills and experiences there and also vocational programs. I was able to work with Jim Kidd over there and some others, Palm Beach County and other counties that had some really strong vocational programs, learn how they fund them and, you know, how they provide staff and how they, you know, develop students that have pathways. Either they want to go to college, you have the college funding, or you had that pathway. You know, you also have the vocational programs, which are very important, because I came up in vocation. So.
That's time. I'm sorry. I hate that awkward, like, time where I have to do it. Thank you. Actually, I'm not going to mute you because the next question sticks with you. Question number three. What did you, what do you see as the primary, what do you see as the primary work of the School Board, Mr. Murphy?
Well, you know, the School Board, really, you know, by statute, they're elected to serve the people. That being the residents, you know, the students, the parents, the taxpayers. And they set policy. They allocate funding to the schools, different programs. They monitor the funding. They monitor the tax base. And they're really just an elected official that represents the entire county as a whole, including employees, of course. And so, you know, you're a personal representative. You have constituents that you're attached to, not just your district, but you're also elected to serve the whole county. In reality, even though it's a district election, because you have to look at it this way, it's the big picture, not just one area. So, you know, being that said, the overall job of a School Board member is to work together as a unified group, hopefully, and accomplish the goals, the district, raise student achievement, make sure we have a great staff, you know, things, programs grow, given pathways for all students of all ages and all abilities and disabilities to progress and become successful as a citizen. Also, have a job and a future, in the future after high school.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. And then the same question to you, Mr. Basquin. What do you see as the primary of these?
All right, yes, thank you. So first, I think everybody needs to be well aware, I think Mr. Murphy kind of led a little bit to it, that we are a policy procedure and a budget board, you know, for the state. And then, but as a board member, we have a working relationship with the superintendent and the staff at the schools. We are a voice for our community. And we can be that bridge between the people and the district and help make that connection that the people might need. There's questions out there sometimes that people just don't know where to go and get the answers. And so we can be that, that bridge that can make that gap, close that gap up and connect, make those connections for them or help them make those connections and help them get the answers that they might need so that they don't have to show up to a board meeting and make a scene that may ask some simple questions or different things. And I feel that is a very important part of being a good School Board member, be in touch with our community and help make those connections.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then sticking with you, Mr. Basquin, how can a School Board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
Well, I guess, first of all, it would be depending on what the goals are. Because there's a lot of different goals out there, you know. And so the data from the schools will tell us a lot. And as far as policies go, I think we need to ask our staff about policies and are things being implemented? You know, we start asking them questions. They can tell us what's happening in the school system. That's communication with people in the school system. You know, and just simple questions to ask them, hey, are we doing X? Or how do you handle, question, you know, why? Different things of that nature will tell us a lot on whether these policies are being implemented and how to adjust them, tweak them, if they need to be fixed or what's going on in our school system.
Okay. And then, Mr. Murphy, the same question back over to you. What's the best way to, or how can the School Board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
Sorry, I had unmuted. It goes automatic for some reason.
That's okay.
No problem, you're fine. Thank you. So, you know, I think, like John said, to know what the goals are of the overall organization, you know, it's a district, you have a strategic plan, you have a vision, you have goals, you set with the schools, administrators. You look at student achievement, you look at the facilities, you look at the employees, you know, the funding for salaries. You also look at the measuring success for student achievement. You know, things have changed. Used to have FCAT, you got the FSA, now we're going a little bit different. But student progress, ongoing student progress is a big thing for modern success. We leave that up to our teachers and administrators to monitor that. They have school improvement plan, they have present every year to the board. Each school does. As a board member, you review that, you ask your questions, get confirmation. And you also ask what you can do to support those programs and student achievement, and the teachers and all employees. You know, so you measure that by monitoring those programs. Policy, reviewing policy, make sure policy is set up, advertised correctly. If there's any questions or any feedback that something's not what it should be or there's some things we need to adjust on policy, you're reviewing that as a board, as a body, making a decision, moving forward with that. There are certain policies that schools have, making sure they're consistent across the district as far as how we operate. And everybody understands the policies, the board and personnel.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And sticking with you, Mr. Murphy, what's the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
I think the best way is to just have an open discussion. Not making it personal. It's all professional, professional courtesies. If you've got some questions prior to a discussion, you know, have a common courtesy, discuss it with that person. Say in administration or a school. As a board member, you really can't discuss it except in a, you know, advertised meeting, a lot of things. So you have to be careful of that part. So may have that discussion and making sure there's a good understanding and looking at the fact that, you know, we're all there together, we're all in the same boat, we're all there for the same reason, you know, student achievement, taking care of our employees, making sure we're good constituents for the parents, communication from the parents to the schools, clarifying any discrepancies, any misunderstandings, make sure the parents are informed. And, you know, just working together as a body and making sure all that works as a teamwork. You have administration, sometimes you have to deal with one-on-one. That's your option, you know. But the main thing is, I think, having that good communication, not taking it personal. And, you know, doing the best you can, represent everybody in a fair and equal way. And, you know, just being a good person on the board, basically.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Basquin, the same question to you.
So we all have differences of opinion on things. We'll never see everything the same. And that's okay. That's fine. That's what makes us a board, you know. I mean, you've got to have different people to, different opinions and come up with the best answer. As long as we're all willing to listen and to be open-minded to what everyone has to say, and then make up your mind. You know, it's, as smart as we all may think that we are sometimes, we miss things. And so I just feel that as long as we all do what is morally, ethically, and biblically correct, can't go wrong.
Okay, thank you. And we'll keep with you, Mr. Basquin. How would you, as a board member, be accessible to the community?
Well, I've put my cell phone number out there in the past. Had my wife put it out there on her Facebook. I do not have my own Facebook account, so I use hers. And so I put my Facebook, you know, my phone number on her Facebook page. If anybody has any questions, it's on the back of my windows on my trucks. That is my cell number. So you are, you know, more than welcome to call that number anytime. If you see one of them riding through town, I will answer the phone if at all possible. If not, then I will most definitely get back in touch with you. As board members, we have a district email. So I do check that on a regular basis as well. And I will respond back to that as long as it's not a negative and derogatory conversation. I will not have those kind of conversations. I don't believe that that solves anything. So, I mean, you can even write me a letter and send it to my snail mail. I'll get it, I'll read it, and I will respond to you. So I'm accessible at just about any way you can think of. You know where I live, stop by, we'll have a coke and sit down and have a chat.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Murphy, the same question to you. How would you plan to be accessible to the community?
Well, kind of like John, I've always had my cell phone number out there. I make it very personal. Doesn't matter who you are, you know, whether you're a parent, you know, employee, whatever. I've always tried to be accessible that way. You know, there's other avenues you can go. Of course, the district has their website, then you have your email. You know, I've always, you know, made my cell phone number available to the district. Any referrals, any questions. Most people know who you are. If you're in the community or actually seeing people day to day or, you know, you stay in touch regardless. I have a big family, so, you know, that's a big network. They kind of keeps me in the loop of things going on. They have kids in school, they have grandkids in school. And also, you know, constantly talking to employees, you know, on the street, you know, at a gas station, wherever, you know, in a restaurant, trying to keep a beat, you know, what's going on. And being a good listener. But, you know, if you're community-minded, that's what you do. That's always been the way I've been and raised. So my accessibility is, my time is your time. And any way I can help out and be accessible, and there's always new ways, we're always looking at different things. Now you've got different avenues, you can do that. You've got Facebook, you've got Instagram, you know, social media. So accessibility is a key. And I've always been a people person. It's not been a person I hadn't met that I didn't know, basically, some way or fashion. But anyway, I'm always available. Anytime I ask a question, all you got to do is call the office. If I don't have a cell number available for you, they'll give it to you.
All right, thank you. And we're going to stick with Mr. Murphy. What issues do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs and offerings? And what changes would you recommend?
Well, you know, things have changed in academics and assessments in the last three or four years. In the legislature, that's changed some of the ways that, you know, we are assessed and students are assessed. I think the main thing is to make sure that our employees have the tools, education tools, and things they need to work with to, you know, monitor student achievement progress. And to make sure that we support them in their professional development and things they need to do to, you know, make our students successful. You know, the assessment part will continue to change, I'm sure. Seen a lot of changes since being a teacher and administrator, superintendent, you know, over the years in legislature. And so I'm sure there'll be more and more changes as we go. Everybody's got their own program. Everybody's got something to sell, it seems like, you know. That's how Common Core came about and other things. But anyway, so, you know, making sure that teachers, staff have all the tools supporting those programs. Professional development's a big thing. You know, Henry County got off to a good day, professional development. You know, Henry County got off to a good day, professional developmental wise this week. I can see the excitement talking to people, you know, having family in the system in different areas, so we're off to a good start, so keeping that momentum going, making sure we have student achievement as we monitor supplying programs, you know, funding those programs and incentives for our staff.
Okay, excellent. And Mr. Basquin, the same thing to you. What issues do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs and offerings, and what changes would you recommend?
Seeing the good gains that we had this past year in some of our schools. I believe that we're already starting to head down in the right direction with that. And, you know, in the past year or so, our superintendent and administration have added a couple of new positions with Ms. Duncan and Mr. Sanchez. And I feel that they're doing a great job helping to bring people together, bringing our elementary schools together and making sure that everybody's on the same page with that. You know, our district is improving in the academics. We can always improve some more in academics. We do have some weak points, there's no doubt about that, but I think with Mrs. Duncan and Mr. Sanchez at the helm of a real there on those taken and collaborating the schools together. Make sure that everybody is on the same page, as I think has really made a difference in our schools, and I think is going to continue to do so. And so I just believe that that's, we're already kind of headed in the right direction with that. I think they just need to expand on that a little bit more. I know we had some tremendous gains with some very low scoring students at the end of the year last year. Sitting at graduation with our superintendent on the field, just to watch the faces of these kids that made some tremendous gains that probably would not have graduated had it not been for some of the things that they have done. So I really think we're already headed down that right path.
Okay, great, thank you. And we'll stick with you, Mr. Basquin. What can be done to improve student achievement? You might have just answered that, so.
Yeah, I mean, really, that is, yeah, that's the job of the superintendent of the administration, as board members, you know, kind of discussed that a little bit already. We've already set, you know, we set the budget policies and procedures. We're not an educational advisory board. And we should not attempt to be one or to micromanage the schools in that way. That's what we have staff and administration for. And the right people that are trained to do those jobs, that's what we hire those people to do those things for. I know as a businessman, I know how to weld, but I can't hire welders to go out there and do their job for them, micromanage that. I've got to trust that when I hire the people to do the job, they're doing the job the right way and supervise it properly, but but not tell them how to do their job, every little minute aspect. We have our people.
Okay, thank you. What about you, Mr. Murphy? What do you think can be done to improve student achievement?
I think continued success, you know, breeds from supporting staff and programs that allow that to happen, you know, you have dedicated staff, make sure they have the tools, and you make sure they're adequate and they're fairly paid for their achievements, negotiation time and budgeting. One of the things we did years ago is volunteer pre-K. When I was on the board in administration, the state only paid for summertime BBK, voluntary pre-K. So that was enough. So working with the chancellor and also the commissioner of education, we lobbied quite hard in Tallahassee to provide voluntary, I mean, full-time BBK, full-time during the year. That's made a big difference in our schools, that way kids come in BBK into kindergarten and they're called up pretty well because the state has standards. There are some places where they may not be called up, and the state addresses that. And then we meet, of course, our teachers have to remediate, but that's made a big difference along with dedicated staff. You know, making sure the staff has all the tools, professional development that helps them, you know, monitor student success, rewarding them with good incentives and pays. You know, and that's, that's in that long term, you really have to monitor that remediation part. Sometimes you have to have summer programs other than summer school to catch some of those kids up. You know, with the pandemic, stuff like that in the past year, you know, the new creativity, you know, online learning and monitoring classrooms and giving, you know, students other options and making sure we have things set up. That's a big thing to continue education is not just, you know, it's a year-round job. The parents being supportive, give them programs, give them the tools they need, make sure they get feedback that helps teachers in classroom, they're extension in the classroom, it can be, that's very valuable at the same time, student achievement.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'll stick with you, Mr. Murphy. How does the school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
I think that my philosophy has always been you try to work within a budget. You have different types of funding coming in, you have categorical funding from the state that you have to spend in certain ways. You know, you've got federal funding, you've got grant funding. You know, as the board, you have to make sure that you monitor the funding and expenditures and make sure you have a balance, checks and balance system to make sure, you know, we're utilizing the revenue we have, support schools and staff, employees, at the same time, making sure that we don't increase taxes locally as a board. You have that discretionary tax that the board has, you also have the 1.5 mil that you have to levy to get your state funding from the state. And of course, if you don't levy that, you don't get all the funding. Use capital outlay funding for buses, equipment, buildings, improvements, so on. So, you know, as a board, you have to be real careful, make sure you kind of stay within a budget like you should. You have restricted funds, you have unrestricted funds, you have reserves. When you come in a situation where you're spending more and you're taking in, you need to take a close look at it, see where it's going to. Is the increased cost of living, is it salaries? You know, you don't want to touch that, of course, but at the same time, you want to make sure that you have adequate funding to provide schools in the district to operate like it should, facility-wise, personnel-wise, and with a good balance of revenue and expenditures, checks and balances, be accountable to the taxpayers. Some districts have a sales tax, they add extra on a referendum, I guess, an extra funding for years in a row. Some districts add an extra two mil adler tax, which doubles taxpayers, which I don't agree with. If I was interested, it'd be a sales tax, but I'm not advocating that. But make sure we have a good balance of checks and balances of funding and revenue and margin net, that's a big key. You have a lot of people that are on fixed incomes, you know, property values going up.
Right, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Basquin, the same question to you. How does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
Well, as much as people do not like to pay taxes, I don't like to ask them to pay taxes. But until we have a better way to fund our schools, we really have no choice. Taxes are the way we have to get our funding. And so I think we all need to remember that the kids that your tax dollars pay to educate will run in this great country one day. And so they deserve the best education that we can give them today for a stronger tomorrow. And there are, Mr. Murphy hit it on the head, there are so many different avenues of funds coming in and restricted, unrestricted, it's, there's a school board finance is one of the most complicated finances out there. So I'm glad that we have a CFO that is able to handle all of that. We've had some great success with Mr. Yanisak was with us, and we ran through a couple of them, and I think we have a very good finance officer now. And so if there's any way out there that we can fund our schools without raising taxes, then I'm all for it. And I know that we have people looking for grants all the time, trying to find funding sources. So that's doing the best that we can with what we have right now.
Okay, thank you. We'll stick with you, Mr. Basquin. As a board member, where would you look to make budget cuts?
You know, budget cuts, that's, that's never an easy, never an easy thing to do. I know, I guess the first thing I would do would be to ask all the schools to look to see where they might be able to tighten their belts up a little bit. And I know that's a tough thing to say, and some schools might say, you know, we're running tight as it is. But, you know, that would be the first thing I would look at, is to ask them, say, is there anything you can do? Look in every, every corner, every nook and cranny, see what you can inch out. And if there's nothing else there, then maybe we would start looking at transportation. You know, we've already taken some steps to save money in the district. We actually have entered to a contract with FPNL several years ago now, and so we've started changing out light fixtures. We had them look at water usage. We had them looking at ACs and changing out ACs and just anything that we can do to conserve energy, which translates into dollars. You know, so we have already taken some major steps towards that. And matter of fact, it wasn't too long ago, I actually asked for an update on that to see, was that money well spent? And they're showing us reports, which we will continue to get on an annual basis to show us where our savings are at. So make sure anybody that's interested in any of that to go back and look at some of our previous meetings, and you'll get to see where they have shown us.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Murphy, the same question to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, just a second. It didn't go on mute. We'll make sure it didn't automatically. So anyway, you know.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick. I'll start your timer over, but you guys are behaving so well that I'm not putting either of you on mute.
Okay, all right, thanks. You know, John kind of talked about the FPL agreement, you know, we had those agreements years ago, and it's continued, you know, which is a good program. And we started with grant funding years ago, replacing lighting in different schools, still at elementarys and middle schools. And that's a continuing thing, you know, fixtures, updates. We had some ASVAB money, which is federal grant money to remodel schools and make them more efficient. You know, and as time goes on, making sure that, you know, we have efficient air conditioners, make sure they're maintained so they can run efficiently. We implemented a energy advisor or monitor in all the schools. And principals would report to the district. And they had, we had a district person on each side of the county that would go around and check schools, make sure lights were turned off, you know, all the certain protocols to save energy, you know, no wasteful equipment going on, didn't need to be running. And that paid big bucks. It always brought back reserved and also saved funding and facility operating costs, because operating cost is really big. Of course, the biggest expenditure is personnel, benefits and insurance and so on. But facilities, there are certain things you can do, and you need to monitor those programs. And as grants come available, take advantage of grants where there's replacement water heaters, chillers, whatever we have to do. Lighting is one big thing. Now with LED, you save a lot more money. And so, you know, upping classrooms, making sure things are the newest technology where it saves money and it's also monitored. There's also systems that shut down automatically their time. Facilities is a big thing. Transportation, transportation has never been funded adequately, never will be, the way it looks. You can't really save a lot of money there, the shadow access routes for drivers. Fuel keeps going up and down, you have to watch it real close. You have maintenance programs, you have capital, you know, dollars you used through local funding to buy buses and equipment. You know, those things, it's always been a battle. The state's never really funded adequately. So the big thing is facilities, make sure we don't have wasteful funding.
Yes, that is your time. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'll stick with you for the final question. Please describe three projects that are important to the school district and why.
Well, the number one project, I believe, is just making sure that student achievement is the biggest goal. Make sure we, you know, allocate funding, provide tools and staff and training, professional development for those things. The other thing would be the growth in the west side of the county, because expenses for laying from Lee County to Lobel, you got the Helms Road project and all that down that way. You know, as people in the veteran communities of Lehigh kind of spread out, Fort Myers, the west side is going to grow. That was our vision years ago about the new elementary, but then the great recession, we had to stop that process because enrollment dropped, you know, economy was bad, people were leaving the state, thousand people a day, now they're coming in a thousand a day. So, you know, growth will be continuing on that side too. Clovison will grow as the New York Park extension and project starts to kind of multiply. We started that process at one time years ago, I met the guy who started the project in Dixie Fried. So, you know, hopefully that thing will mushroom out, bring in more businesses and support more jobs. You'll see that growth. There's some conversations, maybe that Amazon's coming in, putting a big warehouse in. So, you know, things are happening. Henry County has the land, it has the water, it has the people, the staff and the personnel, so next project we have is make sure our workforce development is ready to go. You know, whether it's students that aren't going to college, get running programs, internships with businesses and companies, and also redeveloping the workforce that's out there now for new skills. So vocational programs are very big, they need to be expanded. We started that years ago, so I like to see this continue to make sure we're ready for the growth, because the growth is coming. It's just a matter of time, you can see it. And, you know, any other projects will be based on the five-year plan that gets reviewed every year, making sure we're on task for that, for facilities and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Basquin, same thing. Three projects that are important to the school district and why.
All right, so three projects. Number one, schools. Number two, schools. Number three, schools. We have some very old schools in our district. We need some of our schools to be replaced. We've got some schools that have entirely too many quarters. We have some schools that are just basically overpopulated and that we need to add some wings on to. Why? I think schools are a huge factor, and with all of the growth that is in the county, we definitely need schools. One thing is for sure, we can't educate these kids if we do not have the facilities to put them in. So I think that is number one, two, and three of the projects that we've got that we need to and we're actually working on it. We are working on those. You know, like, we've got some working on trying to get some state funding for some schools because of the growth that we've got in the age of our schools. So, and then the other thing, in those schools, when we do upgrade or build these schools, we need to make sure that these schools are safe and that the schools that we have are safe. There has been a tremendous amount of work already done in these schools to upgrade the safety, to harden the schools. But in this crazy world we're living in today, I don't believe we can ever harden the schools too much to protect our kids, our staff, teachers that are in there every day. There are so many of these teachers that would take a bullet for these kids and wouldn't think twice about it. So I think we need to make, they don't have to do that. And step our security programs up, and I know that we have hired Mr. Clay to help us do that. So I think those are some of the biggest needs that we have in the district.
Okay, thank you. And to finish this off, I will give you, Mr. Murphy, let me just take a quick look actually at mostly like, yes, we can still see you on Facebook.
So that's a good thing.
That's fun, from the earlier debacle, that's always fun. Anyway, I don't see anything that we didn't really cover already, so that's good. That means we did a pretty good job. And so I'll give you, Mr. Murphy, a two-minute window to close and speak directly to your voters and to the community as a whole.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the chamber and opportunity to be on the program and have the conversation in a public forum. I welcome any comments afterwards. My email address is richardmercury0017@gmail.com. My cell phone number is 561-248-8100. That's been a cell since many years ago in a contract. You know, I'm on Facebook, got a few other programs, but I have plenty of family in the area. You know, I can be communicated either way. I'm here to serve. Again, nothing personal, it's John. He's a good guy. I'm here to serve. That's why I want to contribute and offer my skills and knowledge, experiences any way I can. You know, and I think I have a lot to offer. You know, working with students all these years and also as communities, you know, that's where your life is, that's where your heart is. You know, starting to T-ball and JC's all the way through programs, youth programs, my kids. And work with staff. You know, what's always nice is to run into a former student somewhere that you've had either you've either taught or had contact with over years, seen them successful. You know, and being out of state and running to a kid that you taught in middle school that's very successful in California, production and film, was kind of an eye opener. When I walked in Starbucks one day, my daughter, I was visiting California. The guy comes up and says, hey, Mr. Murphy, you remember me? And I said, yeah, but I don't. He said, you taught me in middle school. And I was one of those kids that was, you know, kind of running my own guys. You told me, get myself straight, keep focused, work hard. You'll be successful, get out of that routine. So the kids be successful. You know, you see other ones too, where this athletes, whatever. You know, always making impact in one way or the other, or you're a classroom teacher, a board member or community member. I was very blessed. My father died when I was like nine years old. So I had a lot of male mentors and also big brothers and big sisters that kept me, you know, in line, also contributed my mentoring. So we're all mentors, you know, we're part of the community. And we all here to serve. We should we have to serve.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Basquin, two minutes to speak directly to voters.
Thank you. So I know we had a little introduction and I was, I'm just going to a little bit more on that. I was appointed to this board in 2014 by Governor Rick Scott. Able to fill out the remainder of Mr. Ray Pliner's term. Unfortunately, you know, we lost Mr. Fliner too early. So I do appreciate the fact that I was able and appointed to fill out the remainder of his term. That was such a great honor to me. He was a great man. And so then I was really, I was elected in 2014 and then re-elected again in 2018. And so I am very proud to be your current District Five representative at this point in time. And at the beginning, I also told you, I have three kids that attended Clovison High School, graduated Clovison High School. They all three have their college degrees. And I couldn't be any prouder of my children, everything that they have accomplished. I mentioned already, one of them is a school teacher currently in our school system. And I have grandchildren coming into the school system this year. So I have a lot of interest in the school system still today. And with many more grandchildren on the way, want to have an interest for quite a long period of time yet to go. Currently, even today, through my company that my wife and I own, mentoring some kids through a career source program. Working with some high school kids that are, you know, wanting to go into the welding program, wanting to take us up on the opportunity of these vocation programs that we have in our school system. You know, it's not just a welding program. I talk about that. That's where I make my living. We also have diesel and hydraulics and we have H-Back, we have nursing. We have so many other programs out there for these kids to be able to go and get into a field that they might have some interest in. And I think it's great that we can show these kids what else there is out there besides just going and sitting at a university somewhere and trying to get that college degree that quite honestly, a lot of them will not ever use. Thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you both so much for joining us. And I really appreciate you guys participating in today's event. I, like I said, I, it's something, it's a part of my job that I really enjoy. I am grateful that the Chamber Board of Directors allows us to bring this kind of information to the community. Just as a FYI, this, the chamber in no way endorses either candidate over the other. This is strictly to, just to help make sure that our community is able to cast a very informed ballot. Voting is very, very important and it's, it's never really been something I personally have seen as a right. I feel it's actually an obligation. It's a duty that we have. And so I want to encourage everybody that's within earshot now or that's going to watch this at some juncture at some point in the future to be sure that you exercise your obligation to vote. If you are a Henry County voter in our upcoming primary election, which yours isn't really a primary, it's a final. But anyway, in the, in the August election, and be sure to get out and vote. And, and now you'll, if you just take the time to watch stuff like this, you'll be casting your most informed vote. And I think that's really important. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you gentlemen joining me this morning. And good luck to both of you. I think that the students of Henry County will do well under either leadership and I wish both of you the best of luck. And we look forward to seeing how this all shakes out towards the end of the month. So thank you so much. And again, I encourage you to continue to come back and check this Facebook feed. We didn't get as many submissions as we had hoped for from the community for questions. So I'm hoping that as people see this pinned and liked and shared and commented on, there will be some more public interest. So be sure to be watching for that because I would hate for either of you to miss the opportunity to engage, like I said, with your constituents. So be sure to be checking there. So thank you so much. I hope you guys have a great day.
Thank you very much. Early voting starts.
Yes, early voting starts and, and then
August 8th through the 20th.
We'll get our results on probably the evening of the 23rd. Let's hope, right? So
Thank you. And this is open primary means everybody can vote. No party is limited, yes.
Right. It is an open primary because, yep, it's a final election for, for these races. So open primaries for our school board and, and, and our our hospital board seat that we're going to be doing later today as well. So anyway, enjoy your days and thanks again.
Very much. Good opportunity.
Have a great day, guys. Bye-bye.
You too, guys. Take care.